And that's been kind of delayed and slow going too. So if they come out of the, it's got the whole battery in it, it might hold off until they have a new battery. But then my youngest son is super good.
Doing alright.
He's a rover, so he's. He's doing, yeah, he's a high school rodeo freshman this year, but um, that will probably not be my trouble. Yeah, my wife, my wife, my wife, my dad goes, they have, that's their biggest.
You can hear some of his comments.
I don't know if anybody ever subscribed to this, but I'm not talking about, so what I'm going to do is talk.
Yeah. It's, he goes to these little, they call them jackpots, he win money and they're fast payment, but it's amazing the number of guys because of it, what he does is teach people, so you throw them around the corners and then you tell them, you're right, you put one turn, go to tip, the other guy makes the deals, right? Like it's, it's dangerous to dally because you get a dumb cut in there and then the rope just pulls back, right?
I think he is five, I didn't say that. Maybe I just made these.
Yeah, that's a sport.
Yeah.
I have 5:30. Or 6:30 more time. Megan, do you show 6:30?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we will call this meeting to order for USD 348 Board of Education at this time, and I've got a flag outside my hotel room. I'd like to invite everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
In the flag of the United States of America, the two, the republic, or just stands, one nation, our God, invisible, or liberty, and justice.
Okay, everyone, I know we've not done a meeting like this, but we can check this off our bingo card of all the things we've done strangely together. If at any point I need to be louder or not as loud, please don't be shy. And also, if at any point doing it this way becomes cumbersome, by all means, I can continue as a voting member and our Vice President can take over. Um, I don't want to make this harder, but hopefully this will work out great. Thank you to Kay and Tech Crew for facilitating all of this. With the, at this time, if we could have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Remove.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Organizational items, any announcements of parent family, community engagement opportunities at this time? If anyone would like to share some information, please feel free to step forward and do so.
Mr. Bland is on his way up.
I just want to share that next week on Wednesday, uh, from six to seven PM, we're going to have a back to school night, part two for the junior high, specifically for those sixth graders who have just transitioned to the junior high and finally figured out what the questions are that they need to ask. Now we're going to have an opportunity for you to do that. I hope to be emailing those families in the next 24 hours or so with some more information on that.
Now, Ms. King is on her way up.
Sorry, I have to have my computer so I can get the dates right. Um, I wanted to let everybody know that the, um, Bull and Rec is going to start doing a fitness class in the morning before school for staff or community, anybody that wants to come. Monday and Wednesdays will be at five fifteen to six. And then Tuesdays and Thursdays from six to six forty-five. So we invite anybody to come to the PC in the gym and we'll be having some fitness classes taking place from here on forward. Thank you.
Mr. Brittahan, would you mind talking about tomorrow's parent information I had real quick since you've made your adjustments?
Yes. Uh, because we have so many coaches in our building, we're starting our parent orientation, meet the teacher, uh, back to school night, that's going to start at five o'clock. Um, in the high school, there's, up in the library at five o'clock will be what we're calling a canvas boot camp for parents. So that if they want to come in, um, uh, Kelly and Drew Ising will walk parents through how to get paired, paired up, so that they can then basically see what it looks like through the lens of their student. Um, at five forty-five, I will speak in the gymnasium just about changes, other things of that nature. Um, and then obviously, uh, we've changed it up a little bit, tried to make it more organic, I guess, where they have the ability to check out the new spaces, uh, so we won't be running a schedule like we have in the past. We're hoping it creates just more conversations, you know, um, than it has in the, like shoveling people through and only leaving 30 minutes at the end. So that's what we have going on tomorrow.
Whoops. Anyone else have anything to share? A couple of reminders, I guess I will add. Um, speaking of our Baldwin City rec, they're actually doing a 50-50 raffle in anticipation of their Smoke on the Bricks event. It's for a barrel pit smoker, uh, but the benefit of the 50-50 raffle is all geared towards McCain-Kellerman and Lila Smith. And so I wanted to make sure and help them spread the word on that, Lila Strong and Team McCain. And, um, the bash is coming up September 8th. I have some, uh, committee members who would find me remiss if I did not mention that. So September 8th, it's a community celebration. It's for everyone. Uh, please come on out and, uh, support the football guys as well as all of our fall sports and activities. And then, uh, lastly, I, I would just add, um, again, prayers for, uh, those battles that are being fought, that are seen and unseen, uh, want to continue to offer our prayers to the family of Megan Abruzzo, who was a, a teacher at the primary center. Uh, last year, that information went out. She was not at our district anymore, but we continued to, uh, think about her, her family, all those who love her. That's it from my end unless anyone has anything else. All right, we'll move on to the, uh, approval of the consent agenda, please.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Recognition time. All right, uh, the first item for recognition is the KMEA Elementary Choir. Do we have any of those kiddos there here tonight?
I don't have a roster yet, it's just me.
Oh, yay.
The answer is no, but Katie is here.
Yay. Yay. Well, um, thank you, Ms. Jacobson, for being here tonight. We definitely wanted to recognize, uh, your efforts and your students' efforts. Um, we've recognized kids for this before, uh, for folks who will remember, this is the Kansas Music Educators Association. And yes, we have had elementary kiddos, uh, qualify for this individually, but having the entire elementary choir qualify is a whole new level of awesomeness. Ms. Jacobson, would you like to elaborate on that in any way?
Uh, sure. Three elementary groups.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We are one of only three elementary groups selected for state this year and one of only two elementary choirs, um, so it's pretty good, uh, big deal, especially since the other choir that was selected is, um, the Flint Hills Children's Choir that travels and was like professional level choir. So the fact that our extracurricular elementary kiddos were able to successfully be selected for, um, state as a choir was a really, um, big deal. And, um, and keeping with that big deal, I've also opted to commission a few pieces for them to premiere this year, so. That's it.
I, I also, I want to, to add a little bit more to this, to kind of put this in a little bit of perspective. So we have eleven, eleven hundred sixteen hours worth of school that we report to the state, okay? And so the, this, the work that students do, this is above and beyond that. This is outside of that. These are students that competed with other schools, if you will, with their submissions across the state. And last year, we heard when Mr. O'Neill's group won, there was like a hundred and six, a hundred and seven auditions and they were chosen, was to be one of six, one of seven. So this is kind of the, the same, the similar picture here. The work that was done on this, and, and sorry Katie, but I went through and did some homework on your timesheet for this, twenty, twenty-five and a half hours spent training kids, and they did such a remarkable job under her leadership, and now they're representing amongst educators across the state, so what about Katie?
Katie, this is amazing. And so, um, on behalf of the Board of Education, USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. And so, on this day, August 21st, the board would like to recognize and congratulate, uh, you and all of your students on this amazing accomplishment. Let's give them a round of applause. I'm sorry I couldn't be there to shake your hand, Katie. Next time I see you, I'll give you a hug. Moving on to the Douglas County Fair recognition portion, do we have any kids there tonight, uh, that participated in the fair? If you did, please go ahead and don't be shy. Come on up while we talk about you. And that's okay too. That's okay too. Um, I certainly, we have a lot of our students who work very hard year round, and then, um, the, the Douglas County Fair was also not cool in temperature this summer, so they put all the work into that. Um, on days like today, I know there are kids right now who are trying to make sure their animals are okay. So it's, it's year-round effort, and I really wanted to make sure to include that in our recognition time, uh, for this meeting, uh, particularly, uh, a couple I am going to mention just because they are, uh, recent Baldwin graduates, so this was their last, uh, go around with that. Kaylee Griffith, for example, was, um, overall grand champion for market show in her Cross Fried Market Hog. Emma Kate Lang, I believe she made it to the Grand Drive, but she was, um, a class winner with her steer. Maris Florrie, uh, won a really neat citizenship award. It's the Austin Newell Memorial 4H Citizenship Award, really huge deal. I, we're going to recognize all of our kids, uh, here in a moment, but, um, I think that my, my hopes by bringing this as part of our agenda recognition this year is that, you know, this board has worked long and hard to create an ag sciences position at the high school and junior high, and to also create FFA. And the history of 4H and FFA is so intertwined, it creates so many leadership opportunities, uh, for our students. I hope that in time, we have a brand new teacher in Ms. Hoskinson, and, um, I'd love to see her make this her own, to develop it into some sort of outgoing senior ag leadership award that's bestowed by the district. So this will be our way to plant that seed so that she could perhaps work with Mr. Dodge and, and turn that into something really special. Uh, but in the meantime, USD 348 Board of Education supports and promotes excellence in all school activities, and all of this stuff is learning and it all ties together. So on this day, August 21st, we'd like to recognize and congratulate all of our Baldwin students who have been participating in 4H, who had a great Douglas County Fair, and for those who will continue in those ag leadership areas, uh, please join me in giving all those kids a round of applause. All right, next up, we have our cosponsored USD 348, uh, along with Baldwin Education Foundation, Baldwin Built Employee of the Month. Mr. Dodge is going to present that.
All right, so typically with these, um, I try to keep the, you know, read the, uh, nominations with the, keeping the, keeping the winners, uh, history of the, uh, there's no way I can do that with this one. So I'm going to, uh, to do that now and just read it as they came through. So this individual is going to do whatever it takes to learn the complicated world of school finance. He has done this through personal adversity. He's always willing to lend an ear and give advice, even when it's not important. He's a man of great integrity that cares about the district and keeping it financially strong. He's always willing to lend a hand, such as projects that, uh, projects that take place, such as helping the food service with handing out meals this summer, and helping facilities install instrument, storage cabinets over the summer, over in the van, around at junior high. He has a great sense of humor and makes working in the office a pretty awesome place to do. So, Mr. Oler, Nathan Oler, please, uh, come up and. Do that, and not only do you get this awesome professional wrestling, uh, but you also have a gift from the, uh, or excuse me, the Baldwin Education Foundation. Well, I didn't do it at convocation, but I did it here. The Baldwin Education Foundation is a, is a, uh, mission. Now, I have to tell you a little bit of the story behind this. So whenever we announce the winner, we usually try to come up with some way to surprise them. And Nathan's on our committee that helps choose the winner. And so he, he's, he's always on me, uh, the day that's kind of choose the winner. So he's on me, he's like, hey, Mark, we need to choose the winner for this. I'm like, yeah, you know what? I've got a lot on my schedule, we'll, we'll get to it on Monday. He's like, oh, that's a board meeting, Dan. I said, yeah, I know, but we'll, we'll get it done, I promise. And so I, I had him, I had Friday taken care of. And, or so, excuse me, I had Thursday taken care of. Friday, he's back, and he goes, I know you said you were going to take care of it on Monday, but we're publishing it, he's done. And I said, you know what? This afternoon, we can, we can get to it. So he comes back a little bit later, hey, what do you got on your calendar this afternoon? Uh, I'm in the buildings this afternoon. So I walked out to the, the front office and I told Megan, I gotta go to lunch, and it's not even 11 o'clock. So I come back after visiting the schools and sit down, and I called everybody in and we sit down, like, all right, we're going to choose the winner now. And Nate says, all right. And he goes, I, I saw the submissions we had. He goes, yeah, we had a couple in there. I said, yeah, we actually have five. And he goes, really? And I said, yeah, there were three submissions that were sent, but they didn't do it on our form because they knew you could see. And immediately, if you know Nate, you say, no, 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 I said, you're right. Yes, 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 that's why we waited until the end of the day, we got you. So anyways, Nate's such a humble person, he's been a great addition to our team, and, uh, we're, we're honored to have him. And one last story. He tells us this morning that there's an individual in his family that's got a birthday, so, I'm this, I want to tell you happy birthday, Nate. So I asked him, I said, oh, it's your birthday, it's exciting, what are you going to do tonight? He goes, got a board meeting. But, so anyway, so.
Congratulations, Nate. Uh, moving on to celebrating 348 student voices, um, I didn't receive any letters, uh, between the last meeting and now. However, I thought I would include, this is a form of having a voice, um, we actually had a Baldwin student, uh, Jaden Landrith, who was in the New York Times along with his dad, so that was a pretty neat thing, if you haven't had a chance to check out that article, but one of our, uh, one of our own students was in the New York Times, so I thought that was a pretty neat thing to mention. All right, I think that wraps up recognition, so we will move on at this time with public comment. I know it's not quite seven o'clock. Uh, Megan, or is anyone signed up yet?
Yeah, yeah.
It's.
No, no.
Okay, so here's what we'll do. Uh, we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting at seven PM. Megan, if someone arrives for public comment, please make sure and interrupt so that we can honor that because the sign up is until seven PM. Okay?
Got it.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, moving on to financial report. Uh, it's the 2324 Morgan Hunter Services bids.
All right, so, uh, Nathan and I were, uh, we had been working with Morgan Hunter, trying to, uh, look at, uh, the services that they provide for, uh, covering subs when teachers and plus my staff have to be gone. What they have done is they, they provide us quarterly reports in terms of what our fill rates are. And in doing so, they also let us know how many subs specifically indicate that they'll work for Baldwin schools. And what they found is we've, we've had a, a reduction in individuals willing to sub in our schools. And in their work to determine, you know, what could be the cause, we're looking at the, they indicated the rate of pay that, uh, subs get paid here in Baldwin, uh, versus the other entities within their agreement. And as you can see, at a hundred dollars per day, we are significantly lower than, uh, the other individual, under other school districts that are, are kind of in the area. And so to that end, um, what they suggested is it might be time to increase our rate of pay, become more competitive in the area with that. And so what we had them do was run us some numbers, and they came back with a couple of different options. One was a hundred and fifteen dollars per day for a daily sub, a hundred and forty-five dollars, uh, for long-term sub, and then thirteen dollars, which is the, which matches what the interlocal pays for their subs. And then a hundred and twenty dollars per day for a daily sub, one forty-five still with long-term sub, and thirteen dollars, uh, per hour for a paris sub. So the cost for, if we went up to one fifteen, would be two eleven, seven forty-five, based on what we paid last year. The interlocals contribution to that is forty-two thousand, uh, three forty-eight. At one twenty per day, uh, this, the rate would be, uh, two seventeen, three eighty-three with the interlocal contribution amount, uh, forty-three thousand, two ninety-two. Again, those are estimates because they're based on, uh, what was their last year, uh, numbers. Those numbers this year could fluctuate or change. What that would be for us on, uh, the one twenty daily rate, we would be seeing an increase of about twenty-two thousand. So that's, that's, it's, it's my recommendation, uh, so that we can make sure that we have subs in our buildings. This is, this could be an option we can look at, we can at least rule that out. I put in there the fourth quarter, uh, report from Morgan Hunter, and the building itself that tends to find, if you look to the fourth page, um, the primary center has the lowest sub fill rate of our buildings. And then over, you get the percentage of the, uh, junior high and then the high schools as well. So it's my recommendation, uh, that I would, would ask for you, that we would, uh, that we would raise the sub rate paid to one twenty per day, and then daily, the long-term sub rate to one forty-five per day, and then the para-sub rate to thirteen per hour.
Discussion.
Well, you may have already said this, Mark, I think, uh, a lot of this is also keeping up with our neighboring schools. You know, again, Mark mentioned that, you know, we've been looking at this for about a year now. Obviously with last year's, uh, taxing, or tax consequences there, that, uh, we kind of doubled off on that. So yes, but, you know, it's definitely something that we feel is needed.
Well, that hundred and twenty rate puts us right, like, average, right? With the other school district?
It puts us, it, it puts us equal to what Udora's paying. DeSoto's at one fifty per day, Bonner Springs is one forty per day, Kaufman Schools in Missouri is one thirty-five. Let's see, Lawrence has one oh five, so they're just slightly ahead of us. Piper is one twenty per day, Tongue is one ten per day, and then Turner is one forty per day.
So they're attributed to failure to fill those needs to being.
They, they, yes, they, they speculate that that is in terms of, speculate is not the right word. They believe that's their.
They do like surveys or anything.
And given that our, our intended subs went from forty-eight to forty-one.
Finances. I have a couple of questions. When's the last time this was addressed?
Megan, it was five years ago, correct?
Last increase, correct? Yes.
About five years ago, and it went from one ninety, or it went from ninety-four dollars per day, ninety-six dollars per day to one hundred.
And how long have we been using, using Morgan?
Morgan Hunter.
Yeah.
Since COVID. One thing I should also point out that I didn't in my, uh, in my explanation here, Morgan Hunter's also to help offset this cost, our contribution to them, they're willing to lower their percentage, uh, markup for that, so.
Oh. How many percentage points?
It's a couple percentage points, yeah.
One percent.
See, pull up their proposal here. Proposal there, yeah. So they're currently, they're pay, we're paying a thirty-four percent markup, they're recommending a thirty, uh, for the one twenty per day, a thirty-two percent.
I have a question, is that rate something that we'd be locked in, in for, for, um, a year at a time? Is there, once you establish that, um, how does that work in terms of length of time?
It's, my understanding is that's, that's the rate until it's changed again. So if the board were to increase in, in the future, they could, if the board were to decrease it, they could.
We haven't increased it for a while, but I just wanted to make sure, as we're talking about which way to go, is that an annual thing that we have to revisit every time? Or is that, like it was last time, it stays where it is until the board makes a decision to, to change it? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
One additional comment I would make would be, um, the normal school choose tonight would be to revisit it annually, maybe smaller, just, so that if we don't wait five years and, and, I guess, natural.
I totally agree.
And moving increases the set of pay rates as presented.
Andy, I couldn't hear you. I know you moved, but I couldn't hear what you said.
I'm for it.
You are for Mr. Dodge's recommendation? At one twenty?
Yeah, as presented.
Okay, thank you. Uh, it's been moved, it's, okay. Sorry. It's been moved and seconded to approve the, uh, substitute pay raise as recommended. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Was anyone opposed?
No.
Okay. Okay. Motion carries seven zero. Chairlift bid.
Okay, um, I'm gonna have Mike come up to, to give you, uh, some explanation on his recent bid for the potential junior high lift, chairlift for the, the gymnasium.
So on the 24th of July, I sent out invitation, or I posted invitation to bid for the new chairlift for the gym. Only had, I contacted three companies, only had one, um, submit a bid. And the bid was for a total of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. I don't think that's a bad price, but I think, uh, we need to, uh, try to send it out again to get more bidders involved. So if we could, uh, reject this and I could, uh, go through the bidding process again to get more bidders. That way we can ensure we're doing our due diligence.
Is a motion to reject? What's the status of, of this currently? Can, for students who need this chairlift, can they get into those locations?
Well, I'm looking at, we were looking at, um, for this particular bid, maybe a, um, winter break to get in. We still might be able to, if we can, uh, get the bids in next month. It's, it's, it would be nice to have, but it's not something like, you know, the HVAC where it's a time sensitive.
Okay.
Yes.
We don't have any students waiting to have access.
No.
No. Okay. Say your way, Kelly. I'll second that.
Kelly has moved and Chris has seconded to reject the chair bid. All those in favor of rejecting said bid, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Twenty-three, twenty-four meal prices. Thank you, Mike.
I'm gonna have Charlie, Julie, the food service director, come up and update it on the, uh, food service prices, uh, while she's coming up. We really didn't adjust much of the fees this year, but we did have some, some increases to the. While she's coming up, we really didn't adjust much of the fees this year, but we did have some, some increases to the adult breakfast.
Good evening. Okay, so I did the sponsor application, and there's a section in there that I walked through, and it has me check the adult prices for school meals for when they eat. And with the formulation that I used and stuff, it did not show that we needed to raise student prices this year. So we just chose not to do that this year with all the changeover and give the parents a break another year, hopefully. The only price that I had to change was the adult breakfast. And it went from 235 to $3. That was the only one that was under the limit that I was allowed to do. So that is the only price change that we made this year. Okay.
Given the, the changes that were taking place, I think this is a good way to rule out costs within their efforts. And I will just tell you, the solid plates that are coming out of the cafeteria at Life School West Coast Place is, the, the changes are well received so far, so.
What, what does the reduced prices?
So you get free and reduced.
Public comment. We have one signed up.
Okay.
So we'll come at this.
Um, we can go ahead and finish Charlie's 2324 meal price. And then as long as we, the person has signed up before seven, that's fine. Let's finish the topic we're on, and then we'll come back to public comment. Thank you.
What is the adult breakfast? Is that teachers or?
Yes, it's teachers, yes.
Teachers.
Generally, it's teachers.
Teachers or parents want to come in and eat with their students at breakfast. Sometimes at the primary center, beginning of the year, there's some parents that want to come in and eat with their parents just so they can kind of see what's going on.
So lunch is exactly the same, but it's not changing.
I move we accept the meal plan as presented.
All those in favor of the meal plan changes as presented, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, thank you, Charlie. Before we go to administrative reports, we'll come back to public comment, which is an opportunity for the board to listen. In accordance to district policy, BCBI, this is the agenda time during the meeting when an individual may address the board. The board welcomes up to 10 patrons to speak. Each of the patrons will have the opportunity to speak for three minutes. Those wishing to make public comment are asked to sign up on the night of the meeting prior to 7:00 PM. With the exception of not discussing specific matters related to identifying students or staff by name due to confidentiality considerations without permission, there are no restrictions regarding the subject matter the patron wishes to share with the board. Also, this is the delegation. We only have one person signed up, so we'll skip over that. Board members are not to respond during this time. Again, this is the time established in the meeting for board members to prioritize listening to the public. And I'm sorry, I don't have the sheet in front of me.
That's just me.
I see. Hi, Ken. All right, time begins.
Okay, I'm glad I didn't stop talking about food, just to talk about taxes. So the, the question in, you know, in the, this tax season now, question I have for the board is what is the limit to the tax increases that we're going to see here? So far, the proposal for this year is to raise it 27% compared to the 2021 school year. Back then, 5.76 million in property tax revenue wasn't enough to fund the schooling. In 2022, that amount wasn't adequate, so we needed to raise it to 6.6 million. Then we had to vote us that to go through as planned. But now we want 7.27 million to the same job. That only took 5.76 million a few years earlier. I understand costs have increased because my family's costs have increased as well. But unfortunately, my income, along with the other families involved in, have not kept up with inflation. You know, I think it'd be nice to get a pay raise, so I can pay for the increase in property taxes. But I realized that hoping for a raise solely to cover increase in property taxes from the previous year is kind of a sad commentary regarding what we've grown to expect here in Douglas County. Working overtime or extra shifts or striving for a raise just to cover tax increases is not the American dream. Going that extra mile at work should be for things such as saving for a down payment on a home, going on a family vacation, saving for a car, or finally getting out of debt. So there are five competencies in social emotional learning based on the Castle framework. Self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. I want to focus for just a second here on the competency of social awareness. According to Castle, definition for social awareness is, as I, and I quote, "The abilities to understand the perspectives of and empathize with others, including those from diverse backgrounds, cultures, and contexts." "This includes the capacities to feel compassion for others, understand broader historical and social norms for behavior in different settings, and recognize family, school, and community resources and supports," unquote. For the next three weeks, I'd encourage the board to practice empathy and compassion for those in the community who are facing the financial burden of a tax increase at no fault of their own, and to take time to reflect on how high taxation is a point of frustration for the community. And then with that information, time for reflection, decide if your proposed course of action is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. And I just want to verify that no one else signed up for public comment. Okay, thank you. All right, we will pivot to administrative reports as Charlie's coming back up to talk to us about food services guidelines for 2324. I just want to thank all the admin team. Back in the day, all principals, all admin directors would get up one at a time. This was not on my time on the board, but not long before, and each one would give those reports. There's so much that happens administratively. Thank you so much for getting that to the board the Friday before the meeting. It really allows us to have a good understanding of what is going on in each of your departments slash buildings. And it helps us to streamline our meeting time in an effective way. So thank you for doing that. I know that adds extra time to your plate, but I think it's really worth it. We appreciate it. All right, food services guidelines for 2324.
Okay, so this is the meal account management guidelines for the families. So there's just some different sections here. I'm just gonna highlight the ones that we're planning on changing this year. I'm not reading the whole thing. So under meal accounts, there is a section that says multiple students of the same family household may have their accounts linked together, contact the food service director with their names and students. Who's account, who's account you want linked? So we can't do that on our side anymore. That has to be done through the new thing. So I'm just gonna change that part to not contact the food service director, director, but just go into link connect, and the families can connect those themselves. That's not something that we do anymore. In the second section, there is account payments. And I am just changing the family Titan link in there. We now use Link Connect. It's still a part of Titan. But the family portal side is called linkconnect.com. So I just changed that link so that they can get into that. And then account balances. Okay, so in this section, it says once, okay, so each level had their own, that they could go to a negative balance. So elementary is, once you get to a negative $10, you're supposed to get the alternate meal, which is the cheese sandwich, fruit, vegetable, and a milk, until their account becomes positive again. That's what we've used in the past. So I would like to add on the elementary side that I know like everybody else, sometimes you have to wait for that paycheck to come in. Sometimes it's a week. And as long as those parents contact me, and I've been trying to pass that out, if they contact me, we can work something out, make payments on those passed to accounts and things to get them caught up. And then that way their kid's not getting that cheese sandwich for two or three weeks. So I would like to add, once they get to that negative $10 limit, we start giving out payment reminders at $10 positive. And then they get one each week until they get to the negative $10. Then, because we have an excessive amount of donated funds that have come into our department, I would like to reach out and let them go another day or two on the, the meal count. That gives them a full five days. That's almost a full week for a parent to get a paycheck or something, and to try to get that caught up. Secondary level, that amount was $5, but at secondary level, that's one day. So I would like to extend that to $10. Again, that's three meals, three days, two from the extended funds that we have, as long as it holds up. That again would give them five days, a full week to get with their parents. Remember to tell their parents, bring money in, or whatever. Let's see. At the primary, intermediate, and junior high level, they will get the cheese sandwich after the five days is up. High school level, we're just supposed to not let them eat. But that's, I figure five days, almost seven days if you have the weekend, that's enough time to get money in there. Okay, so second page. And then the left page is just, I had just put in the new non-discrimination statement that had the new wordage and stuff in it. So, sorry, you were looking at that. So I kind of touched base on the second page, where here it said, "Parents or guardians who do not qualify milk forbidden may also be offered to make a payment plan." I'm okay with that. So we're just gonna leave that in there. I know it was marked out at one time, but I think we're gonna leave that in there. And then an alternate meal consists of cheese sandwich, fruit, veggie. And it says white milk, but I don't care what color milk they give, as long as I drink it. So I just marked out white and just put milk. And then I changed the no alternate meals will be provided for breakfast. So they need a little bit of breakfast if they come in and they're hungry. So we're gonna do just a package of breakfast crackers, you know, like graham crackers, something, and then they'll get a fruit, a fresh fruit, and a milk. So that'll be their alternate meals at breakfast, so at least they have something to start off for a day. And that's all there is to that. Any questions?
Yeah, we, I'd like to give, get, make a motion that we accept the school meal account management guideline changes as presented.
Second.
Phil has moved and Susan has seconded to approve the food services guidelines for 2324 school year as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you, Susan. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Charlie. I think this is so student-centered, so thank you for those modifications. Moving on to old business, policy JGFGA. And this is the administration of emergency opioid, excuse me, antagonist. Is Lisa here with us tonight?
She, she is not, but I told her I'd, I'd take care of it for you. So if you remember back in March when we approved our opioid policy, we had an internal document that was, that we were using to document the use of, if Narcan were to, to need to be used. The summer, KSB made a policy recommendation, but we felt our policy was fine and did not need to be updated. However, their policy recommendation included a, an incident form. And so what we asked Lisa to do is to look over that incident form to see if, if that would be the form to use or the one that we had on hand. And she said the one that was recommended is actually the form she'd like to run with. So that's what I've put in front of you. And so tonight I would ask that we approve the Narcan incident report.
Is that something that has to be reported to the state?
I don't know if you answered that question. I have to get, Lisa to get back to you on that. But I do know that we want to document that.
I move we accept the incident report for Narcan use as presented.
Susan has moved and Tony has seconded to approve the incident form as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Facility rental follow-up regarding the PAC.
All right, so in your board packet, we'll have to get the PDF uploaded again. It's not pulling up on my, on my computer, but you should have the MOU in front of you. This was based on our July meeting, the feedback that you provided, the items that were, that were asked of, of us to put together, Gary worked with, with Family Church and MOU that you see in front of you is what, is what we'd like to offer them. So the, the use of it indicates the use of the PAC, the cafeteria, and the commons, beginning in January. Now, they, they don't need it until January at a fee of 400 per day from the times of 8:30 to 1:30.
One question I have, it's been discussed prior. The fact, what, the usage of that facility as a storm shelter? Does that need to be in here or does it not?
I don't think that it matters because it's, we have the ability to displace them if, if, if the need were to arise for any purpose. And I would, I would assume that would be the same.
I think more likely, there is a tornado.
They probably aren't going to.
They need to be really accepted.
And then one of the drafts, I think, includes something about there'll be additional fees if they want to use it on other times. But it only indicates the Sunday morning, but.
I would, they need to use it outside of that. I would, I would assume they would just fill out a new facility use for, for those isolated times.
So this only applies.
This only applies to those Sunday mornings.
For six months, basically. So we want to approve this tonight or?
Well, it's, it's an MOU here that needs to be signed. I don't know that it, it has to be approved by the board. I just want to make sure before we enter that agreement, we can get it signed. And then from that, we can bring it on consent agenda for the formal approval.
Mr. Dodge, could you clarify what action is being requested? Do we need a motion to accept the MOU, or is this just being presented to the board for when it's time to officially enter into it?
Well, what we can do is if the board wants to approve it now, you can, and then I can sign, or we can give it to them to sign, and then next month do the formal approval through consent agenda. Either, either's fine for me.
Do we have to approve it again anyway?
Yeah, I think you should.
I move we approve the MOU between Family Church and, and the school district.
Susan moved and Phil seconded to approve the MOU as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Sorry, I had a shadow. Okay. Motion carries seven zero. Uh, we have no new business this evening. Uh, now is the time for board member input, inter local report.
Um, all right, two quick things. Um, we had some very last minute hirings that fill our open positions. We had a, for school year started in particular by Baldwin here. So excited to report that to you guys. Uh, the other piece there is we, um, uh, for a number of years, we've been having a, um, special education advisory council serve that the co-op, uh, inter local board. Um, they are now actively recruiting more membership for, for families who want to know more about, uh, what special education looks like, both at, from the family perspective, but also from the school interface perspective as well. Um, I believe flyers are going out to, uh, families at, at the open house nights and, and the back to school nights. Um, for other families to, uh, to join that organization as well. Uh, but Tony, any other? Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah. So we'll be rotating. I think our first stop is going to be in Udora in like October and November or something. So we'll kind of rotate around the different communities that we serve. And that's it.
Hey, does any other board member have an item under miscellaneous that he or she would like to share?
Hey, I have a couple. Sorry. Uh, one, I want to, uh, thank Mr. Dodge and team for, um, our agenda. Every single item is tied to our strategic plan. So that was some feedback that we gave. Appreciate seeing that there. We're not making it up as we go along. Every decision that we undertake is for a particular reason and it's all tied to that strategic plan. So thank you very much, uh, for putting extra work in to ensure all of that is there. Um, I also, the between board meetings, I want to make sure and thank our negotiations team. Andy and Kelly, um, Phil, those three, Andy has been our lead negotiator for a long time. Um, this, that is the last time he will have done it. Um, on the other end from the teachers, uh, Mike Curran, Tyler Wolf. Um, all parties come together and, and they do what's best for the district. And so I really want to thank you because that's additional time above and beyond board service. That process went well. We've added 2,000 to the base along with other, um, increases, deserving so to our staff. And so thank you guys for all the extra time that you've put into that. Uh, lastly, I didn't want to look this in recognitions because I didn't want it to appear as though in any way that would be appropriate for a voting item later. But certainly want to thank all the area churches and organizations who have helped with the back to school kickoff. I'm sure Mr. Dodge will talk about a lot of that, but first families, thanks from Bring Donuts to help wash windows. Baldwin First helped with the food pantry drive at staff convocation. Um, I know, um, Redemption Bible helped with backpacks. Um, I know Warden has, uh, helped, uh, lead the FCA kickoff event. Um, and I don't want to miss anybody and I'm sorry if I am. The Udora Education Foundation, for heaven's sake, helped with backpacks at the PC. Point is, there's been an abundance of generosity around, uh, the excitement of the new school year. We take none of it for granted and we appreciate it all. Um, moving on to superintendent's report.
All right. Wanted to provide a little bit of a back to school update for everyone. I've been trying to keep you abreast of the enrollment numbers that we've had so far. Um, as a district, we, we have, uh, in terms of heads enrolled, 1,409 students enrolled this year. Um, to that end, 68 are students who are new or transferred in, uh, while we've had 33 students transfer out. Um, so when you do the math there, we have 35 more students entering the district than leaving. Couple that with the 41 additional heads that we had last year. Um, our numbers are up two consecutive years, which I think is a, a good thing. We're turning in that direction. And so I'm excited to, to see what our report will show with RSP when they, uh, conclude their, their work, um, in November. The other day I was, was driving through and I saw their van parked down at the intersection of, of, uh, what would have been Ames and Sixth Street. And so it's, they've been, they've been active, uh, gathering that information. So I'm, I'm excited to see what they'll tell us in November. Um, so, uh, I've got some numbers there at the, the intermediate center, or excuse me, at the primary center. Uh, we've got nine students in with five transferring out for a total of 365 students there. Again, pre-K through, um, the second grade intermediate center. We have 287 students, 15 of which are new. I believe Dan was telling me the third grade was the popular grade to have new students this year. Um, three students transferred out. Over at the junior high, uh, Derek gets the award for, for most students, uh, moving into the, the building with 25 or seven had transferred out. And at the high school, we had 19 in with 18 out. Um, we, we've only had a handful of those, of those totals. Uh, the student, the 33 that transferred out that are transferring to neighboring districts. Uh, most of them are relocating, um, with that. So that's, I think that, that's some good information for us to, to go by as a district. Um, as Kelly mentioned, the backpacks, uh, I'm in a meeting, uh, with, uh, with Ashley Trough on, on KISA accreditation. And I get a FaceTime from Megan and she's, you gotta see this, you gotta see this.
He ignored it twice.
I, I did, I did decline her call twice. Um, and so I get back to district office and I see about 30 backpacks just blocking the entrance. Um, and, and the backpacks that, uh, that Kelly alluded to were delivered to us from Shanda Hurla on behalf of the additional backpacks left over. There's a countywide school supply, um, effort by the United Methodist Church out of, uh, Lawrence, spearheading a, a number of entities that were involved. And Shanda was generous enough to bring those down to us. And we were able to divide, uh, those 30 backpacks up 15 to the primary center, 15 to the intermediate center. So students that may have, uh, had trouble getting some, some supplies for the year were able to, to get a backpack and, and supplies. So that was a really cool thing. It just speaks to the Douglas County community as a whole, taking care of, of families. So I thought that was really nice. Convocation, um, second, consecutive year that we've done convocation under this format. Uh, Charlie and her crew put together an amazing breakfast, uh, potatoes and eggs and gravy to, to kick off the, the event. Uh, it was, it was amazing. The plates were, were big and full and it was good, it was just good food. And it was fun to have the staff, uh, get together and convene. When we go into the PAC, uh, Mr. O'Neal had his band up on stage, fill up the whole stage, uh, with their, with the, with their music. And it was, it was great music and the music was timely and it was, it was ironically coordinated in, in ways that really fit the tone of our, our message for the day. Um, and so it was, it was really, really cool. Our theme for the day was, was words matter. And one of the songs was, was Word Up that was played. That was really cool. And another one was Sweet Caroline and that actually had a connection to the, my conversation that I had with staff. Um, but it was just a great way to kick things off. Uh, the band sounded amazing and they did their fight song. It's just really cool hearing that, that fight song end with rah rah rah. It's just, it's just awesome. Um, Kelly provided a welcome message, welcome back message and, uh, steering back to, to our Baldwin build hashtag. And, um, just understanding everything we do ties back to what Baldwin built is about. Um, it's represented across the district and across the community. It was just an awesome way to kind of set the tone there. Um, our wellness committee did a, a, a food drive again to support the local food pantry. Last year we were around 650, 660 or so items. This year, 797 items were, were donated, uh, which was outstanding and amazing. And the community, uh, we had, they were able to get some, some donations, some door prizes that, uh, with people who donated were able to get a ticket to have their name drawn. And then we had some really nice, uh, prizes and awards to give to staff as a result. It was just a fun time. Um, I gave a message, um, again on words matter. And we, we talked about, um, utilizing and leveraging stadium anthems as the theme. So I, I, I took off the, uh, the professional wrestling catchphrase, uh, message and went towards stadium anthems. And the idea behind it, when you go to a stadium, you hear those songs playing and how it gets the crowd motivated. It gets the crowd together. Everyone knows the songs and everyone knows the words. And it, it inspires, it motivates and it drives. And we talked about, and so Sweet Caroline was the first song that we played to that, which also stems back to, to what Stuart's band put together. But it's just really cool hearing, hearing every, you know, a large congregation get together and sing that song. Well, we talked also about how sometimes those messages, those stadium anthems, how you can just hear the first two words of a song and everyone knows what the song is and everyone gets in. Um, and I apologize to my daughter right now because I will publicly admit this on, uh, on camera here, but I did rap Ice Ice Baby as part of it, um, which was a lot of fun. Got to live out a childhood dream there, I suppose. Um, but we talked about how you, you know, everyone knows those words. And we also talked about what happens when someone gets those lyrics wrong. When they get the lyrics wrong, how it changes the message, it changes the song and you can never hear the song the same again. And, uh, to that we talked about Gina, Gina, uh, she's, uh, dying of old age. And then another one was, oh, Mickey Mouse swears. Well, the song to that was Living on a Prayer by Bon Jovi. And we, everybody got into that and we pointed out when, when you hear those lyrics, I mean, you can never hear the song the same again. Uh, Grant did, did save everybody because he took the microphone away from me and decided to give everyone his rendition of Living on a Prayer, which, which was fun. Uh, but we had, we had a good time and we were able to take that message because when you're, when you're at those, when you have those stadium anthems, everyone knows what the words are, everyone knows what the message is. And we tied that into why we're doing what we're doing. What, what would it look like for a successful school year for a student? And we talked about that. We want students to be successful academically. We want them to, to know that socially they're taken care of, that their needs are being met. Behaviorally that they have the skills to interact with each other, to have civil discord, um, to problem solve, to show rigor. And into that, that goes back to what our mission statement is. And as we're trying to help our students, prepare our students to change the world through academic, social, emotional and behavioral success. And that's what we're trying to do. We also then connected that to our strategic plan. Um, and with our strategic plan, we've got those four, um, themes that are built into that. With those four themes being, uh, preparing students for success, supporting the needs of students and staff, engagement in school and school activities, and operational effect, operational effectiveness and maintaining and improving facilities to create safe, healthy and aspiring learning spaces. Um, that, that's, that's the big why, what we've talked about. And we're starting to get into the how and the what within what we need to do. With that strategic plan, we talked about these school improvement goals that we discussed last month. And we talked about how in five years, about 2027, when we're reporting what we would like to see. And we would like to see our students showing low risk, um, on savers. 90% of our students, understanding that, that assessment itself is how, is supposed to help us flag when the students not, uh, not successful. We're struggling in that area. We also know that we, we want to see our students doing well there. Um, 80% of our students need to score two or higher on the Kansas State assessment or 23 or higher on the ACT by 2027. Again, it's understanding that a two on state assessment is not failing. State indicates that that's basic academic skills to be post-secondary ready. Um, it is not failing. And so we're understanding that. Um, as well as 90% of our students graduating from, from our high school either have a college CTE sort of, sort of vacation or six, uh, college credit hours. And we understand that not every student is driven towards college, but we want to make sure that these CTE programs help have, have those pathways that are driven and designed and taking them down a path that they can be successful out of high school if they need to enter the career force or if they are going to college that they've, they've got the, the, the skill sets ready for them. We talked about the process and this is the part where you're going into, um, really the, how are we, how are we doing all of these things? Um, over the last year and then going into this year, there are five things that we've strategically done, specifically done in an effort to make this happen. Um, our behavior and social emotional learning through MTSS alignment with TASN is, is a big start to that. Making sure that we have a system-wide, a district-wide process to support students with those needs. So that when they leave one building, enter the next, that system of support is there for them. Our three-year staffing plan, it's allowing us to make sure that we understand from year to year the financial decisions we make as we build our staff for the upcoming year that we're taking on, uh, at, at the front end, where we know financially what our, what our staff needs, what our students' needs are, whether it's through retirements, nutrition, or if it's, uh, programs that we need to add, or if we've got, uh, positions that are, that are connected to expiring funds, that we, we understand that going in and we're building it and we have those discussions. It's on the front end. It is not something that just happens one time a year. But it's part of our, our decisions. Professional learning community plus training for our admin that's starting up this year. That's helping our administrators understand how to lead those database decisions that we need to have and how to have those conversations around the data that we have with our students to make sure that we understand what it is we want our students to know and be able to do, how we're going to determine if they know it or if they don't, and then what our response will be if they know or if they don't. Our, uh, Brandon and his CTE team have been working on a five-year CTE vision. We started this process last December, if you recall, when we started looking at our junior high and our high school students in terms of what their CTE interests were. That discussion has led us into some of our three-year staffing plan changes as we start going into this year. Where he's now working with his CTE team to start figuring out in five years, when this year's eighth grader, the kids who are entering these CTE conversations, when they graduate, what do we want this to look like for them? And then Mike, uh, with the work that he's been doing with our, uh, capital improvements, he's going to be working on a five-year capital outlay vision for us. Again, this is that rotating vision that occurs so that as we're building our, uh, capital outlay plans, as Mike is going through and, you know, if he can guide the projects that we have, he's got to, he's doing so with the vision of what we'd like our schools to look like, what those opportunities or those, those facility options that we, we want for our kids five years down the road. With the state funding being what it is, um, it's, it's, it's important that we have that, that plan, that vision in place so that we can start making some of those strategic decisions. Um, and all of that goes back into our hashtag of Baldwinville. Preparing students to positively impact the world through academic, social, emotional and behavioral success. Uh, because we talked about words mattering. The last slide that I showed staff, and, and I'll have, I have this in the, the public content within, uh, board docs. But if you go into the library, part of the capital work that Mike has done, working with Brent and Kelly to make our instructional spaces more meaningful, more relevant for today's kids, is working on wraps over at the high school. And one of the most impressive items that is there is in the, in the library, that, that media space that they've redesigned and they're working to reinvent there. It says, "Success is no accident. It is hard work, perseverance, learning, studying, sacrifice, and most of all, loving what you are doing or learning to do." And it's, it's really cool to see that vision play out. So that's, that was our, our message for convocation. We then had a, um, vendor fair where local community members, we can engage with them. They, they provide a swag for, for our staff. They're able to get access to the different resources that we have within our community, whether it was financial, whether it was social, emotional, um, or even, uh, even, even, uh, what's the word? Yoga, yoga-based. We had opportunities for, for our staff there. We came back, um, we had a wellness message. Lunch was provided by, uh, the Chamber of Commerce. We came back in for, uh, some benefits, secondary benefits as we begin to shift. Katie, you did the, the ever exciting annual mandated videos for the mandated training. So, but it was, it was a fun day. It's, it's become my favorite, one of my favorite days of the year. Second is graduation, as well across the stage. But, um, this is, it was a good day. It was a fun day. So that was, that was our back to school efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Uh, at this time I move, we enter into executive session with Mr. Dodge uh, to discuss the year two superintendent evaluation tool. And the open meeting will resume, um, let's say six, four, I'm sorry, 7:47. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
I know we left executive a little early. Can you hear me or do we need to reestablish? I'm not able to hear anything from the room this time, but that may be because of a setting. Oh, there we go. Now I hear. Okay. We'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Kelly, you made a good point. I think we should approve the eval tool for our superintendent's year two in the form of a motion. I think that would be particularly with, with it being a slightly, it's not a different tool, but we've had some adaptations in year two versus year one. And I believe we had a motion last year. So let's make sure we're consistent. Good call. If we can have that approval, and then we also have our personnel report for everyone's review.
I'll move to accept the superintendent's evaluation tool as presented.
Kelly has moved and Phil has seconded to approve the year two superintendent eval tool as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries seven zero. And then we have the personnel report before you.
I move we approve the personnel report as presented. Second.
Andy moved and Tony seconded to approve the personnel report as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Motion carries seven zero. Guys, I just, I thank you so much for allowing me to do this in this way so that I could be with my family and, and everyone who, I know this isn't ideal to do it this way, but thank you to everyone who cooperated and facilitated. I'm so appreciative. I thank you so much. All we have left to do is adjourn.
Motion to do that.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Meeting adjourned 7:47. Please be careful in the heat and thank you all. Good night.